It's six o'clock, so let's get started with the Planning Commission meeting for Monday, February 3rd, 2020. Justin, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Right hand of your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, is there any public comment on requests to speak with us on things not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on. Are there any requests for continuance withdrawals or addition of X agenda items? Seeing none. Any conflicts or ex parte communications? Approval of the minutes from the December 2nd, 2019 meeting?
I will make a motion to approve the minutes as presented. Meeting on December 2nd.
We have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so we're moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four-oh. Moving on to the Brown Act training. Shall we want to postpone that?
Mr. Chair, believe it or not, it has been a very, very active December and then January at the city. And so, may we postpone this item until your next meeting?
Certainly.
Actually, until your next regular meeting?
Yes.
Great.
So that will be postponed until, hopefully, the first meeting in March, right? Okay, on to item two on ADUs. Anybody? Well, I do have one speaker request from Nancy Emerson.
Mr. Chair, you may want to go ahead and hear from planning staff and then from the public.
First?
Yes.
Okay, Brenda, would you give us your staff report, please?
Good evening, Planning Commission. Brenda Messer, Assistant Planner, City of Solving. We are discussing tonight accessory dwelling units, in short, ADUs. I'm going to go through, I'm not going to really go through my staff report because I have a PowerPoint presentation for you. I'm going to have Chip, City Attorney, interrupt as necessary when he thinks that I've not explained something correctly or if he has something else to add. And if you guys have any questions along the way, just interrupt me and we'll go from there. I'm going to hit the lights really quick.
While Brenda is doing that, again, you've heard this item several times, and one of the challenges is that the state keeps changing the law. We had expected that the state was going to have some guidance documents out for us, including a draft recommended ordinance by this time. That hasn't happened, so we've asked Brenda to give you an overview, and then I'm going to be recommending that this come back to you. We actually, Zena and I worked this afternoon on draft ordinance we're borrowing from the city of Galita. They've covered a number of items in that ordinance. I'll hit on those after Brenda finishes. And again, we're going to recommend we bring that back to you on a very expedited basis because we don't expect that we're going to have the guidance from the state in the near enough future.
So, as Chip said, we have reviewed this topic with Planning Commission several times, once with City Council to get some direction back from them, some thoughts back from them. That was starting in 2017. But I just wanted to provide the definition of an ADU, which is an attached or detached residential unit which provides complete independent living facilities for one or more persons, including permanent provisions for sleeping, eating, cooking, sanitation on the same parcel as the single-family residential unit. A JADU is a junior ADU, and I'm not going to read through that definition. We'll get more into that later. Again, background, in 2016, the state passed legislation in regard to ADUs that went into effect for every jurisdiction in California, went into effect January 1st, 2017. We really didn't know that this was coming around the bend until several pieces of legislation came into the planning director at that time, and so we just kind of took the ball and ran with it, just referring to the state ordinance. Again, you're not required to adopt an ordinance. You can refer to the state and just adopt their ordinance as they have it set. Now we're back because we did not adopt our own ordinance, and there's been several changes to ADU law that went into effect January 1st, 2020. That said, we've had several applications come in for ADUs. There's only been two that have been ground-up construction. The majority of them have been conversions of a workshop or detached accessory structure, and so they've been really easy to process, which has been, we've been thankful for. So prior to January 1st, 2020, again, we didn't have our own ordinance. We've just been deferring to state law. Prior to that date, applications needed to be processed within 120 days. There were maximum sizes placed on detached ADUs at 1,200 square feet. Conversion of existing square footage for the ADU was to be less than 50% of the existing residence. They were required to have their own entrance and address, and a recorded covenant for owner occupancy was required, along with vacation rentals not being allowed. Again, just some more background. Previously, the Planning Commission really stressed that they wanted planning staff to craft the ordinance to be kind of mirroring the second residential unit ordinance, which was pretty strict. So we tried to, we tried to write the ordinance that way, and we had one version go to the state, and it came back with lots of red lines because we were not complying with state law. When we took the item to City Council, they had asked staff to research water and sewer capabilities in regard to ADUs. They recommended saying that they would, they didn't know if we would have the capacity for every single ADU. That said, conversations with the state said to staff, we wouldn't be able to just ban ADUs for construction. We would have to ban construction for all residential, all commercial projects, including ADUs. You couldn't just ban the ADUs. So now we're back for revised discussion and recommendations from you. Some of the new laws are Senate Bill 13, Assembly Bills 68, 881, 670, 587, and 671. Some of the important changes to ADU law, set maximum setbacks for certain ADUs at four feet, meaning the rear and side setbacks. ADUs created within existing structures shall not require replacement parking.
Brenda, just, you said to interrupt you if we had a question.
Fine, yeah.
Would you rather we wait till the end?
No, that's fine.
On the max setbacks, you said for some ADUs, which ones do not have to comply with the four-foot?
I'm going to get, there's another slide that talks about that. I'm going to get to it, but it's, it's within certain criteria.
Okay, but you'll go over that?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
So one of the other changes was we must process the ADU application within 60 days as opposed to 120. And one of the items with that that's kind of been a challenge with working with Santa Barbara County Fire, they are required to give us the addressing for the ADU, and we've been trying to work out how they will cover access for fire. I've been trying to convince Fire Department to review the access component when the applicant comes in for addressing. The review time for fire is quite lengthy. We try to put a timeframe on their review applications, and sometimes they're just very, very busy, especially with all the fires. They're still catching up with paperwork on that. So that said, I wanted to try to stress to them to check for address at that addressing portion, but we'll see how that goes. Access is something that's required for, for fire within the city of Solving. I don't know if it's going to be that big of an issue, considering we're not that steep in terrain, we're not, we don't have huge hillsides, that sort of thing. We don't have huge parcels like ranches where access could be an issue. But again, that's going to be a conversation we'll have with fire. Going back to the changes, owner occupancy requirement is no longer allowed, meaning they can both be a rental property. Impact fees.
And can I just jump in on that one? That's for those that are going to be newly permitted under the law in place, starting on January 1st, 2020. So for those, I don't want people to get confused, for those that were permitted in the past, you can still have that owner occupancy requirement.
Chip, I have a question. Why does it say until 2025? Why, why is there a sunset on that?
I have no idea what the legislature was thinking in that circumstance, but the legislature has specifically said that beginning in 2025, you can revert back to requiring that one of the units be owner occupied.
Certain impact fees we are allowed to charge to ADUs. However, ADUs up to 750 square feet do not have to, we cannot charge the impact fee any longer. And over 750 square feet, the fees are supposed to be proportional to the cost of the single-family dwelling. That gets a little tricky to figure out. We have a sewer impact fee that was approved by council several months ago.
Brenda, I would just suggest if we can go through these and then
Okay.
On detail, come back on detail.
Okay.
Because there are things we're going to have to work out, but we will be bringing you a draft ordinance where those things are worked out.
Very good. In certain instances or circumstances, an ADU and a JADU can be allowed and permitted along with the single-family dwelling. CCNRs and HOA requirements cannot prohibit the construction of ADUs any longer. Vacation rentals are not allowed, and that's through the state, which is good for single-family dwellings and zones. And one of these caveats that I found a little bit confusing in the legislature was prohibits city from establishing a max ADU size of an ADU of less than 850 square feet or 1,000 square feet if the ADU contains more than one bedroom. And I believe the city of Galita's ordinance talks about that a little bit more in depth. Some mandatory approvals per the state is one ADU is allowed on a single-family lot. That said, I've made some, had some conversations with the state. It's not just a single-family lot. You can have an ADU on a lot that's not zoned single-family if, and it's legal non-conforming single-family dwelling. So there are a sprinkling of TR, of homes in the TRC that have single-family dwellings that would be allowed to have an ADU.
Regardless of the, of the size of the lot?
One ADU or JADU.
Brenda, just on that, but that's where the four-foot setback comes in, right?
That's, it's coming in.
Yeah.
My slide's coming on that one.
So we're going to have to submit to the state on that and see what they say, because in, in the TRC, for example, you can have zero lot line. If you require a four-foot setback, though, for an ADU, that would mean that it can't go to the lot line unless, again, it's within an existing structure. So if it's within an existing structure that has zero lot line setback, then you have to allow that. Okay. By the way, on the, and Brenda, I don't know if you're, you're getting to this, but one of the other little twists is that you do now have to allow ADUs in multi-unit structures and multi-unit zoning. And basically, you have to allow up to 25% of the, the number of primary units as than additional ADUs, as long as the square footage is available. So the, the example, if somebody has a 400 unit, and I know there's, so let's say one that's realistic here. If somebody had a 16-unit project and they had a parking structure that was part of that project, and so there was existing square footage available, you would have to let them have four ADUs built inside of that garage.
So one ADU or JADU shall be allowed within the single-family dwelling, shall have its own exterior access. Setback must be sufficient with fire, life, and safety. So that said, all construction, anything that has to be done to make that a habitable space, would have to comply with the current building code, which is where some of the setback requirements will come into play if it, if it doesn't meet it for the building code. Parking is not required for those, those types of ADUs, but it must have its own address. Sorry?
Is, is that new to have it, to have it mandatory to have its own address?
They do need their own address because they're separate, they're separate units.
I believe that they've always had to have their own address because they're separate units.
Thank you. So back to the mandatory approval for the detached ADU must be approved, and if it's 800 square feet or less, 16 feet in height and maintains a four-rear and side-yard setback.
Question on that. Is there a minimum size to qualify as an ADU?
Yes, it's actually 220 square feet, or if you have, and there are provisions for, for energy and other reasons that you're allowed to have things that are smaller, it actually can go down to 150 square feet.
That's as long as you can have bedrooms, kitchen?
You do need to, to fit actual health and safety compliant bedroom and sanitary facilities, and then for regular ADU kitchen facilities. So I'm not sure how you would do that, but I, apparently it must be possible in 150 square feet if you follow the special building permit requirements.
Well, people are imaginative.
Following up on what Chip had touched on with the multifamily lots, you must approve the conversion of existing space that was not originally livable, including garages, storage closets, boiler rooms, et cetera. And like he had explained with his easier equation, must allow 25% of the ADUs, of units to be ADUs. I had taken a quick, or done a quick webinar, and there was a quiz that came with it, and this was one of the questions. Is it allowed to, are you allowed to approve a building with 200 units with an enclosed garage with 300 parking spaces? Are you allowed to have 50 units in that garage? The answer is yes, you, you must approve those. So that was the, the higher end of the equation. Additional limitations, cities may, may not require correction of non-conforming zoning conditions for certain ADUs. Fire sprinklers are not required for ADUs if the single-family residence is not sprinkled. Again, touching back on the 750 square feet, don't have to pay the impact fees, and then the, the bigger ones have to pay proportional capacity and collection fees. ADUs and JADUs developed within the existing single-family residence don't have to be charged the capacity and connection fees since it's existing square footage. One interesting thing is local jurisdictions can charge a recovery fee to these permits to reimburse costs incurred to adopt the new ordinance, and that's something I think council will probably have to mull over. Processing the ADUs in solving, like I said, it's, it's gone down from 120 days to process to 60. The state law mandates that they're supposed to be processed as a ministerial permit without any discretionary review. The time clock starts at the submittal for the land use permit and building permit. It puts, it goes stop, stops when corrections are returned to the applicant. Once the land use is granted, the applicant can submit for the building permit. We process through Santa Barbara County Fire for the addressing, and design review is not required for ADUs. We are, previously, we had recommended that we wanted the ADUs to match architecturally, and I believe there's a caveat in the Galita ordinance that says that the architecture shall match the existing structure.
And again, I would note, that is only for those units that are more than 800 square feet. For units less than 800 square feet, you're limited to, it can't be more than 16 feet in height, and it can't be within four feet of the property line. You can require that it match the existing unit. Your ability to do much else for less than 800 square feet is extremely limited.
Some potential issues that could be created with these ADUs, increased on-street parking, considering parking's not a requirement for some of these ADUs. The ultimate triplexing of single-family neighborhoods, crowded lots, sewer and water impacts. Some other items for considerations. Limitations on ADUs and JADUs can be based on traffic, sewer, water, and public safety. Unfortunately, the state hasn't really elaborated on what those items mean.
And there has been actually, just in the last few days, a little more elaboration on that. You can require findings for those units that are greater than 800 square feet, which require either your water and sewer provider, or in the case of the city, it would be the Public Works Director, to include the finding on approval that there is, in fact, water and sewer available. He has to look, though, at availability of water and sewer for all development projects in the city, including the ADUs. And I'm, by the way, I should note, when I'm telling you of the things that, that we understand have come up more recently in interpretation, again, we don't actually have a, a guidance document from the state. We're still waiting for the state's guidance document, and whatever you, you recommend to the council that they adopt is going to have to go to the state, and as they did, apparently back in 2017, they can send you back something with lots of red ink and require you to make further changes.
All right. Short-term rentals and vacation rentals are not allowed within ADUs. The parking requirements can be removed entirely, and the owner occupancy requirement can be added back to the, as a requirement after January 1st, 2025. Other standards that can be added is an objective design review and landscaping requirements, usable open space, lot coverage, daylight shadows, meaning if the ADU is causing a major shadow on neighboring properties, that can be something we can look at, and then historic preservation standards. Currently, we have some requirements, since we've been deferring to state laws, that every ADU has been different that's come in for, for an approval. We just ask for the application to be filled out and signed by the property owner. We ask for a recent title report to be, to be submitted. We go through a normal plan review, cover sheet, floor plan, electrical, mechanical plumbing, elevations, so on and so forth, like a normal, normal submittal showing setbacks, property lines, existing structures on the lot, structural, Title 24, so on and so forth. I added some other definitions in case you were interested, just the residential, junior ADUs, primary residential unit, so on and so forth. I can get you that if you guys are interested in those definitions. We can, ADUs can be counted toward arena numbers, which is good, and ADUs can provide additional housing for the city. And that is the end of the PowerPoint presentation, and Chip and I are available for questions.
Mr. Chair, again, our intent is to get, get comment from you, get public comment, and then bring back to you as soon as possible an actual ordinance. We're going to bring likely both an urgency ordinance that could then be adopted by the council to be in effect while your ordinance is being reviewed by the state, and then a regular ordinance that we would send into the state and, and expect them to review and provide us comments on. The ordinance is going to, again, be mostly focused on ADUs that are greater than 800 square feet, under 800 square feet. You're pretty much stuck with the, just the limit that it can't, you can require that it not be more than 16 feet in height. You can require that it be at least four feet setback if it's new construction, and you can, again, require, let's see, 816 feet, and I'm trying to remember what the third thing is.
The four-foot rear and side setback.
Right. For more than 800 square feet, our recommendation is going to be that you limit one bedrooms to 850 square feet, that you limit two bedrooms to 1,000 square feet, that you impose a standard for lot coverage, that the new unit not be more than 10% of the lot, so long as that doesn't cause it to be less than 800 square feet, and that you adopt objective design standards, including landscaping, and including setbacks of things like windows, so that windows don't align with the windows on adjacent parcels. And those are, those are things that have been included in the Galita ordinance and seem to be likely acceptable to the state. And again, to the extent you have others that you'd like us to look into, we'd love to hear those. We'll look into those before we bring this back to you.
I have a question just about, how many ADUs are there in solving? What's the scope? What's the potential scope of development? Every house could have one?
Conceivably, every house could have an ADU and a JADU, so every single-family house could have two extra, and again, every multiple, multi-unit project could conceivably have up to 25% added to the number of existing units.
What's, what's the problem that we're solving? Is the shortage of housing in the state? Is that the issue, or?
I believe that the legislature believes that that's the problem that they think exists and that they think we are solving.
I have a question about the Fire Department. And if you're under 800 square feet, you've got 60 days to approve the, and if it's not approved in 60 days, it automatically is approved?
Yes.
So if the Fire Department doesn't So if the fire department doesn't act within 60 days, they're bypassed and it automatically gets approved?
My read on this is for those units that are less than 800 square feet, less than 16 feet in height and four feet or more from the property line, if they're not reviewed and approved within 60 days, they're deemed approved.
Well, that, that's what you're getting from the fire department is the address.
So if you approve it without the address?
Oh, good question.
So I don't know what happens. The legislature didn't actually tell us what happens if the fire department doesn't act within the 60 days. Again, I don't think that many of the legislators were thinking about the circumstance that you have cities in the state of California who contract for fire services or may have separate fire districts or other circumstances. This is very much a one-size-fits-all approach to land use.
To follow up on that, Chair Williams had come in and asked me about the addressing and if we could not accept an application without an address. And I did reach out to the state and he said, you can get the address during the permitting process. So that said, it wouldn't, it shouldn't slow down the approval process even if they got to, if we got it ready to issue. That's making it approved within that 60 days. And we could still hold off on issuing the permit until we got the address.
And what is it on units under 800 square feet that the fire department, what are grounds could they have for not approving it?
I believe the only grounds would be if there was no access for the fire department to go and fight a fire if, if it was this huge lot and there was no access to get to that ADU. Again, I don't know of those situations that are going to happen in solving. I'm sure they'll come up. But that, from what, speaking with one of the fire captains, that was the issue that he had raised.
Well, fire and safety, that's all, that it's, that's the only way that it's going to. Well, yeah, because you could see if it's way in the back of a building, or back of a lot, that lot was a huge lot and you can't get there and the hoses can't reach it and there's no fire hydrant, I suppose they'd say you can't build one back there, even though legally you could. But probably it's not going to happen a ton. Question, you were saying that the ADUs go into our account perhaps with our housing allocation numbers? Is that, I understand the housing allocation numbers work if we just have things that are zoned multifamily. So, or do they only count if they've actually been built, unlike a multifamily building?
So my understanding, and Brenda, if you have a better understanding, my understanding is that the way that that it's been written, it's a hypothetical, it could be counted. The way that it's being implemented is they are counting those units that are actually constructed as opposed to with all other units.
Zoned only, yeah.
So they haven't suddenly agreed that the city has met its standard for three times the number of your existing housing units plus 25% of your multi-units.
Makes sense. Is there any, and I'm just curious more than anything, the half-mile to public transportation, is that a definition of the crow flies or as roads, walking? Any idea on that?
The, they changed the definition. It used to say half a mile within, gosh, I can't remember what the old ordinance stated, but they changed it to say within half a mile of a transit, any bus stop. So it shortened that area, I believe. I maybe, I can't remember what the old.
But again, do you think it's as the crow flies up and over a hill?
I don't believe that it, that it actually tells us that.
Of course not.
And again, they're, they're assuming that all urban areas are the same, that all urban areas are a perfect grid on a, you know, on a totally flat surface.
And bus stops are.
Exactly. Bus stops are as they are in downtown Los Angeles.
Now, there.
I thought I read in one of the, the codes that are referenced that they actually say half-mile walking distance.
It should be codified that way, but you never know. Short-term, it says it can't be short-term rentals. Is there a definition of short-term? Is that a week or a month or?
30 days.
30 days is the short-term definition? Okay. And they obviously all have to meet California Building Codes or Unified Building Code. And that's, that handles then all the stuff of the 10-foot between structures and all those things that our building code requires them to, to meet window egress and all that. Doesn't, doesn't matter. The only other.
I'm not sure what happens. I actually don't know what happens in that circumstance where you have existing structures that are less than four feet.
And you convert a garage over or something?
Exactly. Yeah, and I, I don't believe that that's covered, but we can ask the city building official about that.
I'd be, yeah, I'd be curious. The last question I have is, is there, is there a process set up for any appeals? In other words, does a neighbor get noticed and it goes up and then they've got X amount of days? Or is it not even an appealable ministerial decision?
For the 800 square feet or smaller, it's actually essentially no decision at all. We can't regulate them. They get to come in and get a, a building permit. For over 800 square feet, it's actually still a non-discretionary approval. They can appeal the, any standards imposed. Again, we'd have to adopt an ordinance in order to get standards that could be appealed. My understanding, though, is it's still non-discretionary. So the neighbor doesn't get noticed and the neighbor doesn't have a chance to appeal. Only the builder has the chance to appeal.
That's, that's amazing.
Really quickly, I can piggyback on that a little bit after my discussions with the state. They, they didn't say you couldn't appeal something, but it's very, very nitty-gritty of what can be appealed. If they found a mistake made during processing that violated state law, then it definitely could be appealed, so.
But that only happens if the neighbor has noticed. If the neighbor doesn't notice, how do you know to appeal until the construction's being done, the permit's been issued?
Exactly. And then, but there was one other thing I was going to say. They, they didn't say not to have an appeal process, but they didn't think that it would be why, not wise, but there's no, no way to appeal it. There's, as Chip said, it's a non-discretionary item.
Why, why is it that the ADUs that are less than 750 square feet shall not collect impact fees? But those over 750 can? But then we have this 800 square foot. We should make it consistent, I would think.
So, so you can, you could make it consistent if you like. You could decide not to charge for whatever size you want to decide not to charge. You just can't go smaller, I'm sorry, yeah, you can't go smaller than 750.
And charge.
And charge. Again, I didn't write the bill. I'm not a member of our state legislature. I agree, I find it very odd that they have a 750-square-foot standard for one set of things, an 800-square-foot standard for another set of things, and an 850-square-foot standard for yet a third set of things. It seems to me like the, the difference in the 50-foot steps there, you know, that's, that's a bathroom, I guess, so maybe that was the idea.
But when, when you folks do a, a new ordinance dealing with the 800 and plus and that we can do all these things and have discretionary view a little bit, maybe we should make it 750. I, I don't, maybe we should make ours consistent.
We actually don't get, we're not allowed to go below 800 for any additional standard. So if it's up to 800 square feet, you're stuck with the state's standards. Even though, again, there's that funny, between 750 and 8, you get to charge some percentage of discretionary, oh, I'm sorry, of fees. They're non-discretionary, though. And again, between 8 and 850, you can have higher, higher standards. So it's not discretionary, but it does, can require some level of review.
And my understanding is we've changed the law in the state over the last 10 years to allow mobile homes to be equivalent with homes, single-family residents. Therefore, I would assume a mobile home could be an ADU and put onto somebody's property.
Yes, and in fact, that's within the definitions. It now specifically includes licensed mobile homes. There's a, I forget what the exact standard is, but there's a licensing for them.
And rent them both out and move out of town and have a duplex. All right. Those are my questions.
You, you can't have RVs, though. It's got to be on a, a foundation.
Is that what it is?
That's correct. It's a, it's a, there's a.
30-foot by 40, or, yeah, no, 8-foot by 40-foot, if I remember.
Brenda may have more of the detail, but there's an actual certification. There's like a metal thing that goes on the back of the unit that says that it meets those standards.
And there's something to do with 1976, before and after the definitions changed. So, and, any other questions?
I have a question. Why, why can't we postpone this until the state gives us that said grouping? And we could just hold off until we have their set regulations and then we can work within those parameters?
So between now and then, anyone who comes in and meets the much broader state standards must be approved with essentially just a building permit. And I'll tell you that, that you have a, a neighborhood right now where neighbors who probably used to be friends are no longer friends because the city had to approve a permit under last year's you must be, you must approve it rules. So I would suggest that you do adopt, or you do recommend to the council adopting a new ordinance that at least includes some of these other standards that you can have for units 800 square feet or more. In particular, the, the objective design standards and the unit size. Right now, you would, you could have units as large as somebody wanted to come up with them. So you could have second residential units in theory as long as, and I think there's still the 50% of the, the existing house standard. But if somebody has a 4,000-square-foot main house, they could come in with a 2,000-square-foot RSU.
How many current ADU applications are you holding right now?
I believe we've got, I don't think we have any in process for plan check. We've issued most of those permits. Several have already received a certificate of occupancy. I would assume about 12, 12, 15?
And do you know how many you've done ballpark in 2019?
I want to say six, maybe less.
So I have a question on the half-mile from a bus stop. And that is primarily has to do with you can't require parking. So if it's greater than a half-mile, you could require parking?
But not in front, front side or available?
There's several exceptions that, along with the half-mile to a, a bus stop. If you're part of a car share, which I don't see a lot of that in solving, mostly Alavista. If you're part of, if there's a parking on the street program, I can't remember what that's like. Some, certain places in Santa Barbara have, you can't, if you aren't allowed to have one of those stickers where you park on the street, it can be waived. But if the parking is required, it doesn't have to be covered. It can be in the front setback, it can be in the side setback, it can be tandem, it can, it, there's, there's a myriad of options for that required parking to be met.
Okay. And I also had a question on square footage. We're talking about 800 square foot. Do we have something in, in our building code that defines how we measure 800 square feet? Is it outside dimension, inside dimension, livable square footage? What is the definition of?
I believe that the actual verbiage in the legislature is, is the square footage of habitable space. So they're not counting your garage because that's not habitable at that point. They're not counting a closet or hallways. It's the actual square footage of that livable space. But that would, should be the inside, inside walls to inside walls, not outside.
So the actual footprint could be much greater than 800 square feet?
Correct.
I think those were the, we've addressed all the questions that I had. It seems like we're at the mercy of the state. And we're probably going to be more so as time goes on.
I suspect that you will see, see more things like this. That it will go beyond ADUs to, again, most local land use decisions. At some point, the state will, will attempt to control them, particularly as they relate to housing.
I have one more question, Chip. Are they going to have a, like a statute, like how many you have to have in a city or like a required amount passed in any given year? Or percentage of housing that has to be ADU demanded by the state so far?
So far, I haven't seen that. Again, you do have what, what are called your Rena numbers, which are your actual total housing potential. And one of the things that, that you hear from time to time is that the state is going to go from the housing potential. So counting it rather than based on the zoning possibility to actually counting it based upon produced houses. And I wouldn't be surprised that that comes along soon.
I have a question on the owner occupied. That's only for new construction? It, it's not retroactive to?
One of the things that we're recommending for, for your new ordinance is that you make clear that that's only for new construction after January 1st, 2020. We believe the legislation allows you to do that. So allows you to continue to require owner occupancy for those units before 2020. I don't know if anybody has yet gotten that approval from, from the state housing department. But that's one of the things we're going to recommend.
And from what Brenda was saying in her description, that would go away in 2025 unless we reenact it?
Oddly, it's the other way around. I truly do not understand this one. But what the, what the legislature has said is the beginning in 2025, you can actually start imposing that requirement again. So they've requ, they've created this.
Sunsets.
Yeah, this five-year period during which people can rent both units. And then after that, I don't know if it's because they had some idea that then you would have been able to finance the construction or what their reasoning is. But again.
Almost like a condition use permit and let's see how many complaints there are. And there won't be complaints and it'll probably continue on.
Right. Yeah, I, I would not be surprised at all if sometime between now and 2025, the legislature came back and extended that time period to sometime beyond 2025.
Right, but what about if you get occupancy in those units and then the city solving decides they can't do that anymore? You, you just have to let those people grandfather it in?
So one of the things we're going to recommend is that you go ahead right now and adopt a provision that says that on January 1st, 2025, you're going to begin having that requirement.
Unless the state mandates it again.
Unless the state mandates it again.
Makes sense.
And on applying for the, the permit, I, I thought I read in here that the owner is not required to do that, that anybody can apply for the building permit. And am I incorrect in that?
The language is really unclear and I'm going to, I, I agree with you about that. And I will reach out to my, my contact at the state to get further clarification on that. But it did read that anybody can apply for this ADU. It does not have to be the owner. Well, that's very, very tricky. We require an owner's signature on every application, so I, I'll definitely clarify.
Yeah, I think we wouldn't have to because that's why I, I thought of it, that if we require it and the state doesn't, are we going to have to eliminate that too?
My suggestion is that we're continuing to require that. Again, otherwise, you don't know who, who is actually building on the parcel and whether they have any right to build or not.
Right, it makes sense to do that. Any other questions? Well, we'll open it up to the public for comment. Nancy Emerson, it's the only speaker slip I have.
Nancy Emerson, speaking for WeWatch tonight. In 2018, WeWatch did comment on the ordinance that you were working on then, trying to be supportive. And we're here again tonight. We realize that you're in a very difficult situation and we want to be helpful. We realize that you're in a very difficult situation and we want to be helpful if we can. I hope somebody will flag the owner occupancy requirement in twenty twenty-five, which sounds like a sunset, just so we don't forget about it in case one can put it in. But it seems to me it's a little less of a problem because vacation rentals are not allowed. Seems like a lot of the problems have been with vacation rentals in the valley. We're glad that right now Public Works can make findings regarding water and sewer because that is a challenge, maybe less of a challenge with a refined plant. Right now, we have, as I understand it, a moratorium on penalties for non-conforming properties. Or you've been working on something that gives people a kind of a get-in-free card to make their properties conforming. And I'm hoping that somehow that incentive can be apparent for these people who may be non-conforming at this time. You know, it's a nice carrot to encourage conformance. And it should be helpful here. We just agree with the proposed regulations that were discussed by you, city attorney. And where the fire department's concerned, that's a very serious matter. And it's a serious matter all over the state. Because fire departments are loaning people like crazy all over the state when there's a fire, which means that practically the whole state has the same problem. So would it be appropriate for the city to write both to the state and to our state legislators about this mess they've made? And encourage the other people in our county to do the same? And try to perhaps get some sense built into this aspect of the state requirements? And one other thing, I'm wondering, there's so many things that you cannot require. Whether you might be able to write in encouragement to do things like onsite parking, being sensitive to the neighbors, making it very clear that you're not requiring it. But kind of, you know, try, just trying to encourage people to think about this in terms of being good neighbors. You know, that kind of discussion is going on right now in, with the cannabis regulations, with problems with existing crop growers and cannabis growers. And one of the first things they did was to say, let's try to make a good neighbor policy regarding this. And there might be some opportunities there. I don't know, but it's something to think about. And I think that's everything I had to say, except, oh, I know the other thing. It just seems to me that there's the possibility that people will sue the city. And is there some way to build into the ordinance, something that says, if you want to sue, you better sue the state, not the city? No way to protect the city? Darn. That's worrisome because we don't have that deep pockets. So I think with that, if we can help with education in any way, I just think it's going to be terribly important to educate the public about why this is happening and what is happening. So that they aren't going around saying that terrible city did this. That planning department, awful people. Prevent that if we can. And we're glad to help in any way we can. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, in particular, if there are any other standards that you, you can think of that you would like us to look and see if they're legal and if they can be included in the ordinance, please let us know. And otherwise, we'll be bringing back an ordinance with, as I described.
I guess I would just like to consider and have open dialogue if this is even allowed. Obviously, short-term rentals are a big concern. And so there's a thirty-day minimum stay, if you will. I'm wondering if we should consider looking at that minimum and raising it. Do, is it, is it available for us to raise it to ninety days, for example? I know that in the past, there have been different properties that have had a thirty-day minimum. People have paid the thirty days and only stayed a week. People have paid thirty days and only spent a few days of it. And so I would think that if that's a major concern of ours, then we can consider a ninety day.
Mr. Chair, that's one that I'm going to ask Brenda to touch base with her implementing friend at the state.
Yeah, I mean, that's a very good point, you know, because you're absolutely correct. And I know in San Diego, many Airbnbs that are not legal do it on a thirty day, but you're only paying for the weekend. But the rest of the time, it's vacant anyway and they don't care because they're getting three grand a weekend or whatever they're getting, you know, and acting like it's a whole month. The other thing that Nancy Emerson brought up, which maybe we could do in our ordinance, is to do the good neighbor policy. I'd like to look at that. I know we did that on our design guidelines way back when. I know we're looking at that. But we do have that design guidelines in the city that says, look, we encourage you to go northern European. We encourage you to do this, you know, be a good neighbor. And perhaps some wording in there would be, you know, keeping your neighborhood at thought and your neighbors and the traffic and the parking when you go do this, you know, just give it, give it some, give it some thought. Without discouraging and without shaming to put something in there that knowing that we're a small city and blah, blah, blah. Maybe, maybe some creative language would be a good caveat to open up that ordinance that we can do. Overall, I feel the same way as everyone else. And I've been on this commission a long time, as you have, and man, we've looked at it and hemmed and hawed and it's changed yearly. And obviously, it's a housing crisis that has faced the city, or I mean, the state. And they've pushed it on to the cities like they do a lot of things, as we all know. So for a lot of this, we're tied to what the state has. I would agree that with Justin, I don't understand when I was talking today with Brenda. I'm like, well, why doesn't the state come out with their ordinance and we can just adopt it? If that's what you want us to do, design the darn, you know, landscaping how you want us to do. Don't keep going back and forth. It seems a silliness. And even those that were, you know, Big Bear and Galita who have got theirs approved, well, it's a moving target and sure enough, we're behind the eight ball again because you can't possibly keep up. So we just got to do what we got to do. I agree, the PR is bad, but it's not us. It's a statewide thing. It's like the marijuana. I mean, it just, it happens, it happens and make the best that we can. And the larger ones, we can at least deal with and try to, try to make them as neighborhood friendly as we can. Like you say, with windows and height restrictions and some setback restrictions and things, even though we can't deal with the duplexing of basically an entire town or entire state. And we'll see where it goes. There isn't a ton of numbers out there. Probably people don't really know that. I remember when we took away the garage requirements, that was a big savings. This whole impact fees is a huge savings. It used to be that you have to pay twelve and twelve. Sewer twelve or ten and twelve for water. Well, no one's spending twenty-four grand on it and then doing it and then have to have a garage. And so it really did prohibit it. Where you're going to have some issues, obviously, you're going to get some bad press, will be when the HOAs come to you and they have restrictions and this trumps it all. Obviously trumps it all. Those are my comments. We've got to move ahead with what we have to do.
Mr. Chair, just, and thank you for mentioning Big Bear again. We thought we had the great answer. We were going to bring to you the Big Bear ordinance, which had been approved by the state. And then we learned that the state has essentially unapproved the Big Bear ordinance because it doesn't comply with the new regulations effective January first, twenty twenty, even though they thought they understood them when theirs was approved, you know, less than a year ago.
The Galita one that you hand us a copy of, has that been approved or has it been submitted for approval?
Galita approved that as an urgency ordinance on the twenty-first of January and has submitted, again, they actually approved both an urgency ordinance to take effect immediately and a regular ordinance to take effect thirty days after the approval. That's being submitted to the state. I think it has been submitted, but they have not heard back from the state. But again, I think right now, I don't know of anyone who has yet had their ordinance approved by the state. So we're suggesting the, you know, the closest in geographically. There are some other things about Galita that are similar to solving, including that Galita originally enacted the county zoning ordinance as its own, which is something that solving also did.
Yeah, I heard on the news that San Luis had submitted one as well.
That may be, and if you'd like us to get a copy of that, we can get a copy of that and see if there's, there's anything clever. Again, I know Galita actually had at least, they have at least four staff people in their planning department who are working on this.
And it seems like, things like water and sewer, if we were to impose something there, it would have to be citywide on all construction. And from a water point of view, that might not be a bad idea. Because I think our water department is predicting that we've got water for a certain amount. And as these units are built and hotels and whatever else houses are built, that allocation of water is going to go down. So maybe we should be keeping track of that. And while we can't limit ADUs because of that, we could limit construction because of it.
Well, we have started some discussion recognizing the fact that the water and sewer will have to be major studies over the next, hopefully, year with the next financial plan. Those systems need to be overall assessed and updated and studied. So I don't think that, you know, putting a moratorium on all development and every construction in the city based on water or sewer is necessarily the right step. What we do know is that we haven't done those studies for a while. So it needs to be a comprehensive look for the city for both of those infrastructures.
I didn't mean to imply that we put a moratorium on it, but that we do exactly what you're saying. Take a look at it and come up with an overall plan for water. And at some point, we're going to run out of water and we're going to have to stop construction on new units.
The city is doing, is doing those studies, including also, will be updating its, its impact fees.
Right, so the city is actually not doing those yet. They, we need to have budget. We need to have a plan for it, but we will definitely be bringing that force with the next financial plan development for council approval.
I mean, dovetailing on that with the water and sewer, there was that, there was a great article about it and it was saying that that's the way to stop, you know, these, these ADUs was with sewer and water. At the same time, they were saying, wait a minute, you got a house with four kids and a wife and a husband and now there's just the wife and the husband because the kids have gone to college or moved out and gone away. I look at the street where I live on Old Mill Road, there is single people over eighty in every house. And I'm sixty and I'm single in my house by myself. So I mean, it's, and I used to have six and eight people and, you know, all that stuff. So the impacts of a single-family houses in ADU is not much. And that's, I think, where they came about with waiving the twelve and the ten for the sewer and the water hook up. Because typically, you just, you have the same or less usage where you don't with a hotel or you don't with a multifamily or commercial or restaurants or something. So the argument kind of went away because they were saying there's a lot of empty nesting houses out there, anyway.
Again, I'd also note, there tends to be, you know, a certain level of fear, you know, the sky may be falling. But as Brenda said, you had approximately six applications last year. And last year, the rules had become far more lax than they were in the period before that.
Yeah, that's a good point. I was going to ask, on the ADUs that have been approved, are we getting many complaints? Or, I mean, is this?
I haven't received any complaints other than the two that were brand-new construction. One was, the complaint was, why are you allowing this to be so close to the street? The other was just construction noise. A myriad of other things, but, but not really.
So there's no real issue, it appears, on people having ADUs?
Well, part of, I think part of it, you talk to your friends in construction, it's three hundred bucks a square foot to build. Go build an eight hundred square foot ADU, it's quarter of a million bucks. You know, you got to get a lot of rent to cover that whole thing. We're not in some areas where it's cheap, cheap, cheap. That's where the mobile home thing is a little more worrisome for me in that those are a lot cheaper, I believe, than the three hundred buck or four hundred buck or whatever you people charge for construction. I don't know what it is. It's a lot.
You people.
Is there a way to just name this, whatever we're going to adopt, as like a temporary or an emergency ordinance? Because it's because of the changing, is it just seems like we're just chasing our tail with this whole thing?
Again, my recommendation is going to be, as Galita did, you have both an urgency ordinance that can take effect immediately upon its adoption. And it'll probably be a mirror image, but then an ordinance that will take place thirty days after the adoption. And again, we're going to send it into the state and the state's going to tell us whether it complies or not.
So how quickly can we make one or both of those happen?
So we have, we have contract planning department support beginning the day after tomorrow, I believe. I'm hoping that they will be helpful with this. So sometime, I'm hoping before the end of February.
I would agree with that. A few weeks and yes, we have a new contract on call planner coming in on their contract for the limited duration while we work on overall organizational structure for the city. But they will be here available in person, so we'll be able to work through them on this type of ordinance.
So is it reasonable to bring this back, say, for our March meeting?
Depending upon if we're able to get the work progressing, as I'm hoping so. Again, we may ask you all to call a special meeting before the end of February.
So it looks like it's going to come up pretty quick. You'll be able to have something drafted up in the next couple of weeks?
I expect that Brenda and I will have something drafted up in the next couple of weeks.
So then I think we just will delay what we're doing until we see and not make any recommendations at this point other than to move ahead with the drafts.
I suggest on this, at this point, you don't need a motion. This would just be continued to your next meeting. And again, we're probably going to ask you to have a special meeting.
Okay. Is that it?
Sounds good to me.
So is there anything else that we need to discuss tonight?
You're missing your gavel.
Just curious, so a contract planner, I heard her name, I can't remember right now.
Lori Temore, Urban Concepts is the name of the firm.
And so the firm will come in and she'll contract interim for a while or as long as we need the help?
Correct, it's interim for a while. She is planned to be here once a week and actually have time with us and the staff to work on whatever planning needs we have. And obviously, this is one of the first and foremost prayers.
Good. She has provided that service to the city of solving at least once before.
She did, yes.
And I think it may have been twice before.
Before Arlene came, I think there was a.
I believe it was once, exactly before Arlene came, she was here.
Okay, good, good, good.
Staff, any further comments? Well, then I think we're adjourned. Thank you very much.